Before I start, Caleb, am I okay?
You're good, Larry.
I like that. [laughing] Good evening. I'd like to call and order the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 3rd, 2019. And before we get started, as required by open meeting law, I'm reading the statement now, so I'll try to get it right. "As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting." Seeing no one stand up for that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible]
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 Next on the agenda is reorganization of the board. I'll take nominations for chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Ballantyne to remain as chair for the next year.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that Ed McManus be made vice chair for the next year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second's that? The discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ed. We have then the clerk, Michael.
I'd like to nominate Stephen Ford for clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to nominate Mike McCasill for clerk.
Okay. Second? All right. Well, we have now two nominations. I guess we'll vote for, first one was on the table, is for Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll go aye. So, I guess that carries it. And then we have, Interview Committee then, we won't vote on because we have two members left.
Hanging around.
So, Michael and Don would be the Interview Committee.
But Mr. McManus pointed out quite correctly last year that there needs to be a motion for that.
Yes.
Do you move that?
I'll move that Don Howell and Mike McCasill will be appointed as the Interview Committee.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you. We have a, looking forward to this year. We have, as I say, opportunities. Weekly briefing. Seeing that, we'll move to a public comment. And I have, I think I'll start, Ed.
Okay.
And we, I brought my, what I did want to say is, we received this word that we have our S, our bond rating has increased from a double A plus to triple A. A remarkable achievement. We've talked about this for, since I've known anything about Harwich politics.
Twenty years.
And I've been here twenty years, so, that's about it. And I'd like to do two things. I'd like Steve to comment first because he has a background in the financial markets, and then I'd like to turn it over to Chris, who he and his staff has done the, a lot of work on this, and I'll be sure to get a chance to recognize everyone.
Absolutely. Thanks, Larry. I have represented lots of cities and towns across the country in their pursuit of increasing their bond rating. Obviously, it means a great deal when you go to market, the interest rates you pay. And it is rare that you get a triple A rating. And I recommend that everybody take a look at the rating letter that was sent out by Standard &amp; Poor's. It lays out for you in great detail the type of work the town had to do in order to obtain the, in order to obtain this rating. And as I said, it shows strong financial management. It shows a strong financial plan. And I'd just like to say congratulations to Larry and all of the staff, because this is not an easy, easy rating to obtain, having, having gone before Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's many, many, many times over the last thirty-eight years. So, congratulations, and I'll, you know, I'll turn it back to Larry, but he can go.
Chris, please. You have the floor.
Well, thank you, Larry. It's a tremendous opportunity. I'm so thankful that the Standard &amp; Poor's people have kind of come around to our viewpoint. I think I've worked on the budget message. I put a lot of time and energy into it each year. I think I'm up to almost fifty pages to really kind of trumpet the, the value of the town and the town's adherence to Standard &amp; Poor's. So, I know, I think I've done six budget messages, and I think I've had it in each one of the budget messages that I've done. So, and I did remind them that on the ratings call, that we definitely tried to adhere to their principles. Obviously, as any organization, nothing is done by ourselves. So, I just wanted to kind of acknowledge the efforts, I think, in the letter. As Steve has pointed out, there's a lot of comments in there. A few of the takeaways that they had was, I think, Carol with the finance, making sure that the reports are easy to read, making sure that the material is there. I think having the audit, as we heard last week, come back very strong was certainly a real plus for the community. The one thing that they had not really brought up in the past, and they did this time, was on sea level rise. I think it was almost like a challenge to the community. Are we thinking ahead? Are we being, planning for sea level rise, or what impact that could have? And I just thought, and just wanted to publicly thank, Charlene Greenhenge joined us for the ratings call, and she went through and really talked about the planning efforts for sea level rise that the town has already engaged in and is planning on engaging in. So, I think they were very much impressed that the, that the town was on top of it, that we were planning for that and looking at that. And then Amy Bullock, who had a strong collection percentages, that was also noted in the material. So, you know, I think it was just a really solid team effort. The two things I walk away from is, you know, one, one thing I think about a lot is that the town is strong. The town has a lot of strong attributes, and we just needed to convince Standard &amp; Poor's that our finances were caught up to the strong demographics of the community. So, I think that it's nice that we've been able to accomplish that. And certainly with the Board of Selectmen, you know, I work for you guys, and you guys make the votes. So, in order to have the budgets get passed and have that financial stability, it's part and parcel that it's the Selectmen, FinCom, and Town Meeting that are all on the same page relative to that. So, another side benefit, which I hadn't really thought about either, because Monomoy Regional School District is, we pay a lot of that, they actually take the lowest rated agency, in this case, it's us, and it's Chatham. Chatham was already a triple A. So, the Monomoy debt would be able to also now be eligible for triple A. So, not only do we help Harwich, but we also inadvertently, or I guess proactively or positively, helped Monomoy. And I was trying to think of the provision. Monomoy borrowed for their school, and I believe generally they have a call provision that you can take the last couple of years off of the existing debt if you have the opportunity to get a better rate, and go in and effectuate that and get even better. Usually the call provisions, though, are usually the last three or four years of a debt service. But we will go back in and kind of look. I think we're about three or four years into the, the Monomoy debt, so it'll be a while before we're eligible for that. But certainly the triple A will be a benefit for Monomoy as well.
Just to reemphasize a point, we're interested in triple A for our health. It gives us lower interest rates going forward. So, it's a positive for the town. And I think it's also important to state that we have a lot of, you know, we had a heated town meeting over spending, obviously, it's going on, but, but our books are in order. So, we have, we're coming from strength in going forward and how we react to this. Any other comment on?
No comments. Congratulations to all involved.
Ed?
I'd like to thank the staff for all their work, and I know, we, I can remember with Dave Ryan as our finance director, talking about starting to do things with the effort to achieve the triple A, and it's been a long time coming, but we finally made it. Congratulations to all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on then, other public comments?
Yeah. This is a note from Mary Oldatch, the principal of the Harwich Elementary School. Castle in the Clouds Playground at Harwich Elementary School was created by community build in May of nineteen ninety-four, when numerous volunteers worked tirelessly to fundraise and construct a playground for the children of our community to enjoy. Castle in the Clouds has now provided twenty-five years of fun and delight for the children from Harwich Elementary School, as well as visiting children from all over. While visiting Cape Cod, at this quarter century mark, the school community wants to wish a happy twenty-fifth birthday to Castle in the Clouds at HES, Harwich Elementary School. Field Day on June eleventh, students, teachers, and parent volunteers will be singing happy birthday to Castle in the Clouds, starting the opening ceremony at eight AM. The community is welcome to stop by and join in. Thanks to Castle in the Clouds for twenty-five years of good time.
Thank you, Ed.
Feels like it was just fifty years ago.
Ed and Chris?
Larry, I had the opportunity on Friday, we got a invite from, actually, it was Dan Napik over in Yarmouth, that we became a green community, and the Secretary of Energy and Environment came out to present a check. So, I thought it would be something that would be nice to have. We have Larry Cole and Charlie Check in the audience, too. I have them come up with their picture. Not often do you get the, the giant check, so I thought maybe with the board, it was a nice opportunity to have a photo op. And then if Larry wanted to say a few words in terms of some of the efforts in terms of becoming a green community. Do you want to speak first?
Now, or? Go ahead.
Yeah. Ten or eleven years ago, when green communities first came up, we as a board considered it. We had concerns at the time about the impact of the stretch code and the lack of choices to fulfill the fuel-efficient vehicle requirement. And a couple of years ago, Valerie Bell, who's now chairman of the Harwich Energy Committee, said, "You know, it's time for the committee to suggest to the board that you reconsider, because the gap between the stretch code and the standard building code has narrowed, so it's de minimis, and there are a lot more choices for vehicles." And in her capacity as Selectmen's liaison to our committee, Julie Kavanaugh attended a presentation by Seth Pickering, the regional coordinator from the D O E R for green communities. And she shortly thereafter arranged for his presentation before the entire board, and you folks received it well. And in particular, the town administrator voiced his support for taking a look at it. And so, it was approved to go forward. And the town administrator very shortly thereafter convened a meeting of his staff, the building commissioner, the facilities maintenance manager, the town planner, the DPW director, to meet with Seth to discuss how to meet the five requirements, what other communities had done, what had worked, what hadn't. And so, that got the work underway, and the town planner very quickly located a parcel on town-owned land that would satisfy the requirement for renewable energy activity as a right-seeing basis. And then she prepared whatever needed to go to the zoning, the planning board to, maybe it was the zoning board, to get a change and prepared the two articles for town meeting for, in May of two thousand eighteen. And those got unanimously approved. And then the work began on the five-year plan to reduce energy by twenty percent. And a state-supported grant to the Cape-like Compact provided us with technical assistance in the, in the person of Margaret Song. And she worked very carefully with those staff folks to create that plan. And meantime, the board asked periodically for updates from the town planner, and she was accompanied by the building commissioner, who assured everyone that compliance with the stretch code was not a problem anymore. And all of that was very instrumental in our getting unanimous approval of those two articles at town meeting. And then the plan was completed in time to be submitted last fall, and the result is that it was approved. And this, this check is for an amount of money that is very close to what was projected that Harwich would be eligible to receive. So, all of those people deserve credit, and Ms. Kavanaugh in particular for taking the lead on the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Larry.
Do you want me to bring the check over here, and then we'll just have?
Yeah. I wanted this, the whole board to be behind the check.
It's, it's long enough for that.
Why don't we go, why don't we go on Friday?
Do we have somebody to take the picture?
Yeah.
Tell Mr. Galvin to get his camera on. We're going around, or?
Yeah, go around.
Okay.
Hello, there.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
And you?
Excellent.
It's the Two Mary event.
Cindy has a better chance of getting it.
It's a little it's handy.
I took four, one of them's got it.
Thank you.
It's not every day that you get a giant check.
And treat Mr. Lantel good when you come to that item. He's a good race director.
That's not the best endorsement you can get, but we'll go from there. Anyone else for a public comment? If not, let's move to the consent agenda. You already, who's?
I'll do it one last time. Give them some other job training.
That'll be your job.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move adoption of the items thereon, including a vote to approve recommendation of the Jim Newman Human Services Grants.
Can you split that off, because I can't vote on that?
Okay. We will take that up separately. SEMCS Sports Application for Road Race for a Family Food Pantry to be held on November sixteenth. Vote to approve the Tenth Annual Chamber of Commerce Charitable Foundation Road Race to be held on Saturday, June twenty-second. Vote to approve the recommendation of Assistant Town Administrator to approve the installation of approximately forty feet of conduit under the town road to provide service to customer at twenty-two Vacation Lane in Harwich.
Second. Any discussion on B, C, and D? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to have to recuse myself for the next item. I'm the chair of Site Law Services and heir recipient of Human Services Grants.
Mr. Chair, actually, the other, one of the other applicants and awardees is Outer Cape Health Services, of which I'm the vice chair of, and a member of the board.
And I'm second by the way.
They're second vice president, so I don't know where that leaves us legally.
I think you have the rule of necessity.
Rules and necessity.
We've got to have enough to have a, do you have any conflicts on here?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Move that we vote to approve the recommendations of the Jim Noonan Human Services Grant Review Team to award FY twenty Human Service Grants.
Second. No discussion. I mean, you have to follow up with the vote then, because I'm recusing myself.
Oh, you're recusing yourself?
Yeah.
And we can't pass it?
We can't pass it.
You can't pass it.
Rules and necessity.
Okay.
You'll vote, and I'll step back. The three of you can approve.
No, no, it's okay. If it rules a necessity, we can vote.
Rules and necessity.
Stephen and I just have to say aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Two zero three, which is a favorable vote.
Okay.
Thank you. That's unusual, but.
Rules and necessity.
Can I, can I comment on that, even though I recuse myself, and that is not related directly to this, but part of their letter, they, they suggested we form a grant committee. Is that something that you all would like to bring back later date to discuss? It's like Porterville.
Actually, in the past, there was a committee, and as the name implies, it was headed up by Jim, Jim Noonan, former Selectman and man about town. I don't know how else to describe it.
Well, we'll, we'll need to discuss it now. I'm just wondering if we want to bring it back.
And while when he passed away, Tony Pagliaro kept it going for a couple of years until he was the last man standing. Everybody else had, you know, and, and that's how it got turned over.
Yeah, Chris?
So, maybe, Mr. Chairman, I did read through, and just so folks at home are aware, what we do is, when these applications come in, administratively, we kind of process it. And when I started, you know, I wasn't familiar with the community, so we draw, drew in people. And so, I had about five people that go on the evaluation committee. I think the first year I was here, I did it myself, so I was on the committee. But I do think the, the recommendation is a good one, to formally create a committee. So, instead of pulling people together each year to review, and maybe if you would like, I could have Emily go through and craft up a charge for the committee, and to give it some form and function, and bring back a draft for the board to consider, and the recommendation of who, who should be on there.
Our people, and we'll have to hold on to that, but consensus is, we're okay with it?
Yep.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think part of the, part of what happened is it evolved after Jim and after Tony, is then we made the value judgment that we were going to go out and have Monmouth County contract for us. And it got further and further away from us. So, when we pulled it back, the vestiges of how we used to do it were all gone by then.
Okay. Michael coming, we may back. Steve, you okay? Okay, we'll, we'll put that on the future agenda then.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Steve, you want to read that? I'll turn this, you read the public hearing?
Sure, if that's my new role. Public hearing application by First Crush Winery, Cape Cod, for annual on-premises Farmer Series Pouring Permit for wines, Frank Puzio manager.
Would you like me here, or?
Hello? You can, you can sit there, but.
Mr. Chairman, maybe before we officially, I recognize that we have to open up the hearing. I just wanted to provide comment. We did go over the building commissioner and myself to see Mr. Puzio last week and had a discussion. As part of the board's transition, we are starting to commence where not only do we look at the liquor license request, but we're also looking for just general compliance with rules and regs of the town. And in the review, I think this is actually a positive story. He has, he and his wife have a successful business, and they're kind of growing out of their space. And one of the issues that comes up in that, in that format is on the liquor, there's really no issue. He, he has no, nothing of any concern. The police department came back very positive. But in the space that he is, in the, in the original site plan that was issued, he had it for manufacture of wine, and it was manufacturer only. And in order to do retail, he would have to go and amend the site plan to have the site plan allow for retail to occur. So, he does need to go to Planning Board to gain a site plan review and update to allow for that. It does allow by special permit for, they, and I don't mean to be insulting, but by fast food, any kind of like takeout or retail-type operation, not necessarily a sit-down restaurant is, is, a sit-down restaurant is prohibited, but fast food or retail cash and carry is permissible. So, he does need to obtain that. And the second was when we reviewed the septic system, because it's really garage-based, it wasn't set up in the septic system for retail. Because of the scope of the nature of the business, I don't think the septic is going to be that significant of an issue, but he will need to apply to the Board of Health and just get a clarification or an updating of what the septic system would allow versus what he's looking to do. So, in, in my staff review, in, in meeting with the different department heads, the recommendation would be to open the public hearing and then table it until such time as the regulatory approvals on the site, site plan and septic approval have been achieved, and then to have him come back. That could take, you know, I'm not, I didn't go so far as to find out, depends on when he submits the material, but that could be thirty days, forty-five days. It, it could be a little bit. But we'll work with him. The building commissioner was with me, and you can certainly go through and, and help him through the process.
Thanks for being here. You have questions, comments?
I understand, no fully. And tomorrow I will come to the town hall and begin that process, and be back to have you consider us in the future.
Okay. Michael?
Any questions?
I, I guess just one question, just for clarification. The, the pouring, it's for sampling, right? Is that?
Right. We're the only winery on Cape, well, there's three wineries on Cape Cod. Churro and Cape Cod Winery both have pouring licenses, and virtually every other winery in the state of Massachusetts. We, to this point, have not chosen to do that. We didn't want to have a location where people can come just to sit and drink. The public is calling for that. We've become a very popular, sought-out site for tourism now on, on the Cape. We've done a good job. We're on TripAdvisor, we're like always in the top four or five in Harwich on TripAdvisor. We'd like not to have it a sit-down, no food, but if they request after their pouring maybe one glass of wine, if we're not busy, I'd like to allow them to be able to do that. We're very short in our season, just beginning now, and probably will end around the beginning of September. So, and our hours are only till about four o'clock typically, or five on Saturday. So, we're not going to be an evening destination for the public to drink.
Follow-up?
So, the only follow-up is, the pouring license then, in my mind, is that, is that where we're coming up with the retail part of it, that he has to come back for, in case somebody wants to buy a glass of wine?
Yeah, just to be very clear, there's no issue with the, the liquor part. The winery has been reviewed and approved by the police department. It's really the, the location originally, he had it just for manufacture, and now he's added a retail component. It's the retail component versus what he was initially issued for site plan and for the septic system.
Okay. So, I just want to say good luck, and hopefully we can get the regulatory piece done quick, because it is a short season, and it's here.
Subsequent to all of this, if approved, not, not if we're approved, but at any time, you're welcome to come and be our guest, to see what we do there, to observe. I think you were a surprise.
It was a, yeah, it was a beautiful location. I had not been. I've bought the wine in the, in retail package stores, but I hadn't been there, and it was a great setup. So, it's definitely an asset to the community.
The building inspector was thrilled when he walked in, not expecting to see, wow, this is, you know, so.
Well, well camouflaged with the outside.
Exactly.
Ed?
Yeah, I've actually been to your facility many occasions, when you've been so kind as to host a charitable fundraising event, which is a
Sure. We do that quite a bit.
Great asset to our, our community, and imbibe of your alcoholic beverages. I didn't ever see any liquor around.
I move that we continue the hearing to date to be determined.
Second.
Second?
Thank you for attention.
Just all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We look forward to coming back.
Thank you.
New business. This reminder, I guess, Community Center's closing hours at nine PM will begin July one. Chris, you want to just?
This was, just a, more a reminder, during the budget season, we went through, and Carolyn Carey, the director over at the Community Center, had installed electronic counters, so she knew how many people were coming into the building, not just through the front door, but through the two side doors. And what she found in the review is that very few people are in there after nine o'clock. So, she did recommend during the, the budget hearing, that she came in, that she recommended that we reduce the hours down to nine. I, I think there is one group that will be in there that will be finishing up. I think they start before nine, and they generally wrap up around nine-thirty. So, similar to what we could do here, where the facility be locked up, and people can obviously exit, they have the ability to exit because we have the panic bars that are required. So, the idea behind this would be to close the facility at nine o'clock due to a decrease in traffic. A custodian does stay in the building until, for an extra hour to clean it beforehand. So, the custodian would be in the building at the time that the, that group closes up.
Any comment, questions? I don't think, we needed action on this. We just, it's just information.
I think you took action during the budget hearing. We just wanted to remind people, because it is coming up for July one.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Item B on new business is Selectmen's Summer Meeting Schedule, non-resident taxpayer meeting discussion. This is a first draft that Chris put together for us. Item B on new business is Selectman's Summer Meeting Schedule, Non-Resident Taxpayer Meeting Discussion. This is a first draft that Chris put together for us. Any comments? Chris, I have one. Have we separated out the non-taxpayers meeting in the past, rather than hold it as one of our?
We've always done it on the same night. What we try to do is just have a lighter agenda for other items and focus just on that.
But this one, you have it on a separate night. Is there a reason for that?
I, no, I think the, she was just trying to do the color coding, so it just means a night that the board would be meeting. So, the recommendation is to basically meet on July 1st, July 15th, July 29th, August 12th, and August 26th. And then, because of the Labor Day holiday, to then meet up again on September 9th. So, it's almost every other, every other week.
Okay. Michael?
The only comment I have is, you know, we do this every year. It seems to make sense. It's nice to have a meeting every other week, but as discussed a lot this year, we seem to be falling behind on work, budget, budget season. All the reports come in, we start doing the committee reports, which I believe currently there's 58 committees, and we seem to fall behind. So, that stretch between August 5th through the 26th seems like an awful long time, but I think we just want to look at the workload that we have, you know, things that weren't done with budget warrant timeline last year, we didn't change that. We didn't change town administrator's review process, which we talk about every year. But the meetings seemed to have been very late last year when we got back to work.
And that's a good point, Michael. Let me, let me just comment briefly. I've asked Andy to give last year's budget schedule to me, along with what she calls her, what do you call a calendar that goes on forever? Perpetual calendar. And what I want to bring back to, to the rest of the board is a, is a combination of the two, to have your review, because it's clear that we have to move some of our action dates up. And I know, don't know exactly how it complies with the charter, but I'm a little indifferent to that, because we can move ahead of that, we can't move behind that. So, we can get ahead of the schedule. We can't wait as we did last year, going on. So, I would, I would suggest, let me bring that back to you, and then if we need to modify this, or if we're sticking to the meeting, then we can. That's. Michael?
One more point. On the 12th, the non-residents taxpayer, past two years at least, we've done some business that night, depending, because it's usually just a report to the non-resident taxpayers.
Yeah.
And there hasn't been a lot of questions. So, we do do business that night, but as Chris said, which is usually a lighter agenda.
That's August the 12th?
August the 12th would be the non-resident taxpayers.
Any other comment? If not, we'll tend to do this, and as always, if something comes up, I'll keep prerogative to hold a special meeting to deal with it. Contracts, Chris, that's just nothing, or?
Well, just on the summer schedule, do you want to vote, or you want to bring back a revised copy for next week?
If someone cares to take a motion, I'd.
I move we accept the schedule as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And again, I'm going for it, because I'm holding prerogative, if something comes up, we can, we can schedule a meeting.
Absolutely.
You can always, as Chair.
Schedule a meeting. But we realize that we're getting, as Michael says, we have a ducks in a row to give a head start on something, we may want to do that. Okay, town administrator reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things this evening. Just want to give the board an update on, we do have bidders for the solar, the different sites in town. The As of Right, that was alluded to earlier, up at the Card Barn and at the Golf Course, and as well as, I'm trying to think of that, Police Station was another site that was looked at, and the Community Center. So, we are working with Liz Argo over at SEVAC, and she's putting together the materials, so we'll try to have a request for the board to consider doing leasing on the various sites. But it gives us the opportunity to do more solar. As maybe folks have not fully remember, we do have at the landfill about a 4-megawatt facility that generates about $300,000 a year for us. So, this would give us an opportunity to continue to bring in revenue for the town, selecting some of the sites that I alluded to. Also, on the sewer project, we did have the bids come in. We have, CDM is working on the review of the bids, and hopefully in the next week or two, we will have a recommendation for the Selectman to do, I think we're shooting for a couple of things, three, three items in particular. The bid award, the current low bidder, or the apparent low bidder, is Robert Hauer, a local company, which I think is excellent, that we have a local company who's done outstanding work for the town. And then also, we have put the final touches on, we just received, or recently received the appraisal amounts for the different pump station locations. So, we have the order of taking, that includes those, those awards. And then third would be to invite Charlie Sumner in, the former administrator over in Brewster, who is a subconsultant for Weston and Sampson, and will be the de facto project manager for the folks in the community to be able to reach out to that have questions in regards to the sewer project. And then the last item that I have, Mr. Chairman, is just on Safe Roots to Schools. I have brought that up in the past. We are looking for, with the state, just to remind it, folks again, we are in line for about $600,000 to do sidewalk improvements around Harwich Elementary School. In terms of the way that process will work, as I've been informed, that the state, through DOT, Department of Transportation, will oversee, they have hired a contractor named AECOM, AECOM, and they will come out and have a meeting with us. They are kind of looking for, we did raise the issue about making sure that the board would have final say before any, you know, final project was done. So, they did send back, I have the town engineer is gonna be the point person, Griffin Rider, will be the point person for us on that. And they probably will do a project of, I want to say PIF, I'm trying to remember what, there's a notice of project form, that first that needs to be done, and then a project information form that needs to be completed. But the lady at the state wants to just make sure that the board is still on, on board with going ahead with this. And I think that we'll bring back the notice of project form to say what we're doing and how we're planning on doing it. And then if the board wants to make any changes to that, certainly the board would be eligible. The nice thing about this grant is it's estimated to be 600,000. It could be a little bit more, so we have an opportunity to do a little bit more. But I think doing the design and showing what we want to try to accomplish is probably going to be a key component to us moving forward. But they do, they would like to have, I think, a reaffirmation by the board that you want us to pursue, and make sure that the sidewalk project is something that the Board of Selectmen is interested in proceeding with.
Okay. Don?
Perhaps we could bring that back through the agenda. Pretty much, I've been consistent about these types of things, that's why Chris mentioned about the grant. I don't want to find ourselves at the 11th hour, finding that we got no choice but to either do something or not do something, and much like that with the sewer thing. Rather than waiting for two or three weeks for the final recommendation where that's it, it's set in stone. If we could actually bring it forth, so that we could discuss here what we might want to be looking at and doing, I'm not suggesting that it would be any different, but if we can collaborate so that we're not doing it at the 11th hour, that would be terrific.
I would agree. It'd be nice to have some objectives going forward that way, at least could agree on that and move forward. AECOM actually is the company that Eastham used for their drinking water work and related work, and really great reviews, and so a lot of high opinion on AECOM, on their engineering.
I believe we use them on the MS4 project that we have, the collection system project that we have for stormwater. That concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Don?
Had a very quiet Harwich week. Nothing to report.
Ed?
Well, just a follow-up question. The contract that the, that we've received bids on, that are under review, that was for, I understand that the, that phase was split into two contracts?
Correct.
So, this is on the first contract?
On the first contract.
What's the timing of doing the second contract?
I believe that's going to be prepared, and documents will be out, and the bid process will start probably in a couple of weeks. One thing I neglected to say, I just, I saw Ed there at graduation on Sunday. You know, I did have a chance to go to Montemay Regional High School graduation. I don't always get a chance to go there, but, you know, boy, what a bunch of talented kids in the community, you know, just the academic achievements. And one lady, I don't remember her name, that she did some singing, and, boy, it's just, it's nice to see the talent and quality of students that come out of that system.
It was quite a nice affair.
Michael?
Just on the bid documents, the second part of the wastewater, is two weeks enough time to go out?
It's just when they'll be prepared to go out, then they'll have more time to actually submit the bids.
Okay, on this last one, was it, it was only two weeks on this last?
No, I think it was three to, three to four weeks.
Three to four weeks. I have nothing.
Steve?
I actually have the same question as Michael, so it's been answered.
Okay. I have nothing, except remind you to, any items you wish to put on next week's agenda, get them soon, and get it on.
Just, I'm pitching for the wastewater contract.
Right.
Yeah, just on that, Mr. Chairman, I do have a copy of the contract. I mean, it's literally five inches thick. So, if anyone wants to come in and see the detail in terms of the bids, if I hear the board write, and that makes some sense, maybe we can do the bid tabulation and get that on for next week. We won't ask for a vote, and then put in for a vote on the 17th. We do need to have, if we want to secure the 0%, we do, we do need to have that voted prior to the end of this fiscal year, so by the end of June, so we can get that material. But if anyone wants to see, I mean, it's a heck of a lot of material to scan and have available, literally five inches thick of material. So, if anyone wants, I have the full plans in my office, and I have the full spec book. But I would encourage the board not to have me scan all of it and put it in for the packet, because you'd be reading forever.
Actually, I have an electronic copy of that that they sent me.
I think we did make a copy.
I have to figure out how to do it. I tried to send it to someone else, and it was, it was too large to let me send it. I didn't figure out how to separate it.
Should be able to put it in Dropbox.
It has to be uploaded.
I, I have.
See if it's, it's a lot of material.
I, as I say, CDM Smith sent it to me, Michael sent me a electronic version.
Yeah, Mike Judasey.
Mike Judasey, sorry.
I mean, I could try to have it electronically and then have it as backup material.
Well, let me see if I can send it, because I have it.
Okay.
No sense going through the effort again, I just need to figure out how to get it out there. Okay, anything else? If not, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
You all said?
Steve, I'm sorry.
I think.
Steve?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve, did you get a time?